Good morning.
Good morning.
So happy to see you all, to know who we are.
Karen Williams.
Wendy Kane. The Randar Girls, as seen from Marge Burton, ninety many years ago. Last year Wendy Kane filmed six interviews using her iPhone. The filming of the last interview, a group discussion, was facilitated by Scott Hoskins. Everyone was asked the same question, which Wendy painstakingly edited together. We listened for themes and when possible brought in photographs to strengthen our storytelling. For clarity and time, we narrowed our focus. It pains us not to tell you everything we know about these families. Their friends, their families included, farmers, teachers, lawyers, carpenters, mothers, fathers, daughters, sons. This meeting played a big part, a big role in their lives. And I'm certain their ancestors would be enormously proud of them. We are so excited for you. We're so excited for what you are about to learn about these six friends. Suzy Woodman Hoskins. Ben Burton. Marge Burton. Tim Mammel. Darryl Kestner Marzy. And Pam Skinner. In one of the interviews, you'll hear Tim Mammel talk of being gifted a memory because he was told about something that happened to him when he was so young, he wouldn't have remembered it. For those of you who have not been up in a meeting, we are gifting you their memories. This meeting is important to us, to all of us. We are a community that extends beyond Newtown, and here I say, beyond the grave. We learn from each other by sharing our stories, past and present. Wendy and I want to thank Suzy, Ken, Marge, Tim, Darryl, and Pam for sharing with us what it was like to grow up in Newtown.
I think just when I was really small and I was sitting in a meeting with my parents and I'd always want to jump off the bench and crawl around and I was told later that several adults objected to me being in the meeting, but I didn't know that at the time.
I was probably about two years old when my father insisted that I had to come to meeting and shortly after, my sisters, when they were born, they had to come too. And I don't know if I was well behaved or not. And when I got to be about four or five, I sat next to my great grandmother. That was Myrtle Kestner, my father's grandmother. And we sat at the back bench and Graham sat on the end and I sat next to her and then my mother and then Robin and Dana. But every Sunday, we came to a meeting because Dad said so and we squirmed a lot and my grandmother would be like, "Okay."
I have an early memory of a summer worship when all the doors were open and you could hear the birds and the outdoor sounds. And my brother lying on the bench on the other side of my mother, snoring.
First-day school. We had those benches filled with different grade levels. And Amelia Swain would be up front doing the opening exercises and we would sing. She would read something or give a little talk or something. And we would be sitting with our teacher and then after fifteen minutes, I think, yeah, about fifteen minutes, we would have sung a few songs and then gone upstairs.
So my really earliest memory kind of goes around the service that was held here upon Billy, my brother's death. It was a memorial service. And he's buried in the back part of the graveyard.
I can remember coming to first-day school right up there because that was the only space we had. The whole first-day school had to fit in up there. And Lydie Kestner was our teacher. And I remember liking to come.
So I remember being pretty small and being in a meeting. It was pretty much really, I'm steeped in it. You know, I remember ever since I was really small.
Every Sunday. For a long time I was a little irritated and, "Oh Dwight, uh, meeting, uh." It was a little dull, you know, for a while. You're like entertaining your thoughts and entertaining yourself till it was over. So I was bored a lot and I would count everybody who came to meeting. Every week I did a head count for no reason at all. One, two, usually it was about from sixty to eighty people.
Well, I think the plus side was that we did it as a family and it was part of our routine. I think the downside was that it was, there was usually a battle over my clothing. So there was sometimes a battle over that and the rush, rush, you know, hurry, hurry, we've got to get there on time.
About that time, maybe eight years old. It was my life. I didn't think about it as being going to meeting. I did think about it, I said, "Oops, an hour, nothing to do." Early on, I guess, maybe teens, late teens. I did, I would enjoy coming into this house of worship. Just such a warm, in some ways comforting feeling to be here.
I was allowed to read the first twenty minutes of meeting and then the book got put away. And the last forty minutes was a lot longer.
So I was thinking how much this meeting house was a part of our lives because we didn't have all the other activities. And so coming here was what we did. We just always came to meeting.
Isn't it interesting how our family stories also interweave and interact? Because I'm thinking, you talk about starting housekeeping in the same apartment that you did. And I know that we lived for almost twenty years in the same apartment at George School that Ken had lived in and my mom. And that before you moved to the George School campus, you lived on Liberty Street in the same house that Valerie's family lived in.
Lady's name was Nana Palmer, 141 Liberty Street. And I didn't associate her with Quakers. I just associated her with a sweet, caring type of person. In reflecting on what must have happened. The Quakers kind of pulled together, I think, around this young couple with two young kids, one very sick.
And part of that was because, I think, because of the way the community took care of each other. That when somebody needed a space to live in, Nana Palmer had it available to rent or whatever.
Well, I'll start with Valerie because Valerie is exactly one year younger than I am. She was part of that teen cohort that got together. I think her family too felt so grounded in this meeting community. I remember first encountering Pam. Pam and Dick came to the meeting, I believe, as young adults. Pam had grown up in the meeting, but she came back and they were here. And it was so nice as kids to have people who were in that generation between you and your parents. And Marge and I are related. So Marge's husband, Ken, and my mother are first cousins. My mother came to live with them when she was sixteen. So I grew up calling Marie and Bill Burton my grandparents, even though they're my great aunt and uncle. So we had family connections through those years. Ken and Marge were overseers at our wedding. I was a flower girl in their wedding.
And were you married here?
August 11th, 1959.
The Y is so interesting.
Well, it was my grandparents married on August 11th, as did my parents. So we did. And there were twenty-eight years between each wedding. And because of that timing, each wedding happened to be on a Tuesday. I don't know why my grandparents married on a Tuesday, but it set it down apparently. Tuzie Hoskins was a flower girl.
Marge's brother, Dick, and I had been friends since, let's see, I was six. We went through George School together.
I babysat Tim.
One clear memory I have is Suzy Hoskins was always kind of a leader and I was like a really awkward kid. One Sunday, I was about ten or so, we had a community from Mantua, Philadelphia, come up and join us for a Sunday picnic at the end of the year. I remember just kind of like sort of standing on the sidelines and not knowing how to engage myself in this whole event. And then I saw Suzy Hoskins pick up a little kid and put the kid on her shoulders and walk around and I'm thinking, "Oh, I could do that." So I found a little kid and I put him on, I don't know if he, I didn't ask if it was okay or not or whatever, I don't remember, but he seemed to be all right. And I put him on and I suddenly felt like I was doing something to join in.
Tim has always been so caring and he's such an example of nonjudgmental loving of the people around him. And he'll do anything. It's just been wonderful to work with him and to learn from his example.
Some other early memories are in Esther Hart's first-day school class when she started being my first-day school teacher when I was in nursery school.
I remember when I was in high school that Philadelphia Yearly Meeting was revising its faith in practice. Nineteen seventy-two edition it would have been. And Kingdon was teaching our class and we sat around the table and he handed out copies of the queries and told us to write our own. What would our twelve queries be? And we spent like the entire year looking at the queries, looking at what the queries meant, how we would reword them. And that was a really meaningful experience. I think that was kind of a way of connecting some of the pieces for me. And Kingdon was also amazing.
We came to first-day school every Sunday and we got old enough. We had a really nice group of teenagers. I think I had Mary Lou Gould for a teacher one year. And one time I had Walter Mammel, which was very interesting because he taught us all about science. He gravitated away from Quaker stuff and taught us about science.
Although I have some memories of first-day school. Marge Stuckert, I think, was one of our teachers. She goes back a ways.
That's another thing about Quakers. We always say, "Find your way. What works for us might not work for you." But I remember being encouraged here. Went around to other religions, visited. We did the Swedenborgan church. That was so different. So we went to the churches that would invite us, you know, would say, "We'd like to come for a service," just to get a feeling of what something else would be like that might suit us better. Now, how many religions do that? They didn't back then, they might do more of it now. Down here was meeting. Upstairs were the classrooms. I was from college, I was home in the summer, so I taught first-day school for kindergarten. They were right outside that door while meeting for worship was going on. Can you believe that? And I had sometimes twenty children.
Oh, my gosh.
And then I thought, and if anybody ran across the downstairs and heard it? I mean, it was unbelievable.
We go to first-day school class upstairs for, I wouldn't say every year, but we had Dick Skinner, we had Walter Mammel, believe it or not. He taught one time. And who was the other teacher we mentioned? Kingdon, that's the one. Kingdon Swain led our first-day school class. He was very good. He had a lot to teach us.
The meeting was kind of an oasis for me. It was like a real nurturing, embracing community for me. I was a really weird kid. I was definitely in the spectrum. I was very clueless how to act and how to, you know, what are these rules I'm supposed to follow? I had no idea. And I was always accidentally breaking social rules and things like that. But at meeting, I was really accepted and embraced and it was a really warm community for me. So.
I mean, I loved summer meetings. I don't think we came as often during the summer, but I loved the breeze blowing through, the quiet, the stillness in here and the sounds. It was sort of like taking an hour to sit outside and listen to nature. We had a really active young friends group. I have great memories of these monthly meetings when the teen group would get together and there were a good dozen of us. And we'd get together for a potluck supper here or a progressive dinner or we'd come in and play games in the meeting house and we felt like we owned this place. You know, nobody was here to tell us not to run on the facing benches or not to hop over the grave zones. Another memory I thought of when we were talking earlier was when I was a kid, we had square dances in the gathering room upstairs, usually with a live caller. But I just loved those. I loved dancing with my dad. I loved, you know, again, it would be a potluck and then a dance with the whole community.
And our lives were really full of Quaker until I got to be a graduate from George School and I went away to college. Every Sunday, every Sunday. And I was involved with the young friends. We came to first-day school every Sunday and we got old enough. We had a really nice group of teenagers and we had all sorts of social activities. David Gould and Suzy were a year older than me. Suzy and I have the same birthday, exactly one year apart.
We would see each other at young friends. George School was our meeting ground for the young friends in this area. And we would have dances in the girls' gym. And then all our picnics were at George School. And we had swimming because there was a girls' swimming pool at that time.
I mean, I got involved in quarter and in yearly meeting, young friends activities as well. And my brother, Tom, loved the fact that you and Dick were his first-day school teachers.
Anyway, we had a lot of activity going on here with young friends. We had a large group. We had a lot of fun.
I remember playing sardines in the dark. I remember when a bunch of us were in the girls' room, the ladies' room, and listening to the boys outside going, "Can we go in? Do you think we ought to look in there?" But it was a fun group and really made us feel strong as a group, but interesting.
In my recollection, first-day school came first, but then there was a fifteen-minute period between when we did singing.
Who played the piano?
Millie Sparks. And that was a big part of it. So I grew up with the song, "As We Leave This Friendly Place," because that was every Sunday. That was the sort of the way, the thing that signaled the end of the singing time. And it reaffirmed this place being special and us being a community, I think.
Always had singing. When I was little, the singing came before first-day school. And Larry Passmore's mother, Betty, always directed the singing. Every Sunday, and then we'd go to first-day school. And at some point, the singing got switched to after first-day school. But I'll tell you, after a long time, I knew where every song was. And Betty would say, "For our last hymn today, 142." And I'd go, "Oh, that one, good." And a few years ago, they were giving away the old hymnals. I made sure I got mine. It's all beat up, but I know I had it in my hands when I was ten, you know.
What I missed getting older in this meeting is music. We had a lot of music then. And then eventually it became people from George School that played instruments. Joe Evans played the guitar, you know. So we had, and the Wells, both of them played instruments. So we had all these people that would lead us. And sometimes we'd sing for half an hour. There was one song that my son Dwight remembers where the men would stand up and sit down. And then the next group would stand up and sit down. So we had fun.
And when do you say, "This is the way we've always done things. We need to keep doing this ritual, this tradition." And when do you say, "A breath of fresh air, let's try something different."
And of course, we always went by first names. But I think when we were young, we always said both names because that was more respectful. Amelia Swain. I just always said, "Amelia Swain?" And she said, "Yes, Pam."
For several years, meeting had a, I guess it was first-day school, would have a picnic early spring. Sometimes it was on George School campus, was it?
So we could use the pool.
Ah, yes, yeah, yeah. And that was fun. Usually there was a softball game with enough heavy hitters to swat the ball pretty well.
You know, it's interesting to see which traditions continue and which ones just sort of fizzle out. I mean, in terms of traditions we continue, we still give bibles to the fourth graders. We still give faith in practice.
The Easter flowers for babies and people who can't make it into meeting, those go back as long as I can remember. I think we've always had shared meal times.
I can remember Christmas. Did anyone say about Santa Claus?
Well, I remember also, speaking of Christmas, when, was it Paul or Bob Applebaum dressed up as Santa? When my kids were little and he'd come down the stairs and hand out candy canes to all the kids.
These doors would be open and we would hear a bell start to ring. And Ho, Ho, Ho would be coming down the steps. Imagine, Quaker meeting.
First-day school would have some kind of a program and we would sit on the facing benches. And at the end, we would get a little box about this big and it had holly decoration on the box and it was full of hard candy. It was such a treat.
Then we would be given a little box with ivy, pretty ivy on it. It was green and white with little red berries. And it was a box with a handle, a cloth handle on it. And that would be hard candy.
Every year, as Marge said, we'd have a program with singing. And we also had a big Christmas tree with mittens. And I think this meeting is still doing that. I mean, are they still doing that, a mitten tree? And for a long time, they had little coin cards. The kids would fill in the coin cards with dimes and hang them on the tree. But the main thing was that I like to think about as the program. And it changed from year to year. But one time, we had this really outstanding program that Ellen Givens directed. She dressed up as the Virgin Mary. She had twins. And one of the twins was baby Jesus. And everybody else had a big part. Some of the fathers dressed up as the three kings, shepherds and everything else. And it was what I would call a lavish production. It just had all these costumes and things. It was a fabulous show. Some of those years at Christmas, those of us who had instruments performed. We played music. Jeanette and I played our flutes. Robin played the clarinet.
Well, I hope someone will remember this because I remember something very vivid. It was Christmas.
I know this story.
Do you?
Go ahead.
How all the meeting house benches were turned around and they were facing that way.
I remember that.
Oh, some people didn't like that.
So Palmer Sharpless, my father, I think Lou Woodman, other people handy with their hands, made a manger scene. And then it had Strahl in the meeting house. I loved it. Strahl, she had a baby and I can't remember if we had a fake baby or if it was the.
It was a real baby.
That's what I thought.
It was her twin son.
Okay.
Yeah, twin son and daughter.
All right. Oh, I'm so glad somebody remembers all this. My father, I thought, was Joseph and she was Mary.
She was Mary.
Yes.
And they, my father sang and she sang and I thought, wow, we are pretty neat. When we started the Christmas Eve, originally, they assigned families to take over the responsibility for it. So they would run the program. Karen and Bob Thomas with their two children. It was their turn. We're all sitting here quietly. In come animals. Oh, thank goodness someone else remembers this. The meeting house and I thought, did they get permission to do this? I mean, carpet? Okay. So I looked around, well, you should have seen the elders. I thought someone would have a heart attack. They made it through without any accidents.
My mother was always, and Tim's mother was amazing at running around, visiting people who were in the hospital and going to people's homes and taking food and involved in local concerns. So I grew up with that. The other thing that hit when I was a young adult was the women's movement, not just Vietnam. And women being important leaders. And I felt like that had always been a part of my life here. So there was support for women in leadership roles in Quaker circles. We've come a long way from the era when the women of the meeting did the social events, the teas and there was a women's group, I think.
The women's group was very strong.
The women's group was very strong. They did all of the social things of the meeting. And they would have their own meetings. And it was a very influential part of our meeting. So I grew up knowing women had as big a role in life as men.
They would meet periodically and have bake sales to raise money for things like dishes. And they finally got tired of baking, and so they just would come and make a contribution of funds rather than, and skip the whole baking thing. But that group is the group that chose the current China.
The women kept things going, kept the community. Your mother.
The women's group was amazing, I thought. They did so much. They were the soul of the earth of this meeting. When I was married, they took care of the reception. It was just what everybody did and just pitched in. It was strong women, wonderful role models, had brains, spoke out their thoughts, but in a very Quakerly way.
She was talking about the women's group. And they would have bring-in-buy sales to raise money for various projects. I remember when they finally got rid of the horsehair cushions on these benches, which was really no better than sitting on the wood. And got the first go-round of cushy ones. But they all got a little tired of the bring-in-buy thing, so they would just pass the bucket around and forget the bring-in part.
My grandmother Lydie was in that. And both she and my great-grandmother did a lot of baking. That kind of trickled down to meeting. They were always doing committee stuff, like she said. Cook for the bake sales and cook for various covered dish suppers. About once a month. Didn't we have a covered dish supper? It's just like your shared lunch. And my father didn't quite go for it, but I think it was because he preferred to be at home having his own dinner. But my mother loved the covered dish suppers, and we loved the covered dish suppers.
When Heather was born, Down syndrome, I asked if the women's group wanted to come and meet her. She was just a tiny baby. I wanted to educate what I read up on and knew about. So they came to my house and introduced, and we kind of passed Heather around. And I told them what I knew. They asked questions. And this meeting couldn't have been more supportive. They were wonderful. And she was included in everything that we felt was appropriate and so forth.
Some sequencing, because I remember also, as a young adult, being invited to be on the Peace Committee, because I was so involved in Philadelphia Yearly Meeting and the Peace Committee and peace activities. So that was sort of something we've tried to bring back, is engaging some of our young adult friends in committee work in the meeting. Well, the one that stands out the most is Care and Counsel, because as a trained clinical social worker, it felt like that was where my skills could best be applied. And I really care about this community and about the individuals in this community. I was on worship and ministry for a while. And then I was assistant clerk, and then I was clerk, and then I...
Well, I've been a long-term, many times, member of Building and Grounds, because I love taking care of this pretty old place. And I was on Care and Counsel. Yeah, with the addition, I was asked to be head of the committee that decided how to design and equip the new kitchen.
We would have leaf rakes. We would have campus cleanups and so on. And I always had myself in the middle of that. Later on, I made stuff for the meeting. Like the cellar steps that go down. You know, it was a basement underneath. I made the steps from the Bilko doors down into the basement. There are one or two picture frames hanging here that I have made. I was treasurer, which later became comptroller. Awful word. For two sessions.
Yeah, now I'm very active on worship and ministry and Care and Counsel. And I do, you know, I help out with the AV equipment during meeting for worship. And, you know, I just enjoy being part of it and doing whatever I can to, you know, to help the community, as well as it gives so much to me.
The other person I remember from my early childhood is Amelia Swain, Kingdom's mother, who was this little Quaker lady with her little tight curled hair and, but, you know, and that flowy dress. There's an image that comes to mind, a woman who will envelop you. And she loved children, which is why she was a founder of Newtown Friend School. But she was always so loving with us kids.
One time, Amelia Swain was, she was getting on in years and not coming very often. And one day, she shows up for meeting, and everyone is thrilled to see her. She was the most beloved woman in the meeting. Well, they invited her to sit up on the facing bench. Great honor, okay? In the middle of the meeting, she has a spell. It was a little scary, because we couldn't see what was going on. And we were hustled out. No, don't look. Get out the door. She's going to be all right. Get, get.
I just remembered something about Amelia Swain. My middle name is Woolman. And knowing that, Amelia Swain happened to have a first edition of John Woolman's journal, published in 1777. And she gave it to me. And it's inscribed to Tim Woolman Mammel from Amelia Swain. So that's a pretty nice treasure to have for the meeting.
And we had meals that were served for the community to make money. And I remember being one of the waitresses. There was an elderly man, Wilmer Lundey. And he was a very old man at this time. And he was sitting at a table. And they said, Pam, go get your dinner now and sit down. And it's always nice to sit with the older people. So I thought, oh, I was scared to death. I think I was eight, eight or nine. So I sat there, and I'm eating, and he's next to me. And so I thought, well, I need to ask him a question. I said something about, well, how are you today or something? And he turned, and he looked at me and went, when thee speaking to me, thee says thee. I didn't know my mouth. I'll never do that to a child.
Yeah, as a young child, one of the things I remember about meeting is the three Georges. And Valerie and Tim will tell you this too. There were three men named George in the meeting. And all of them felt led to speak every Sunday. That was really hard on a child. And George Haynes always felt led to speak at five of 12. And he always spoke for 15 minutes. So it was torture.
And up here, the three Georges. George, George Haynes, and Walton, George Walton. And George Haynes' wife, Anna, for many years. And one time, Anna invited me to sit up there with her. She said, Valerie, will you come sit with me? I don't want to be lonely up there. I'd love to have one of you youngsters up here with me. So I felt like I was being done a great honor to sit on the facing bench with Anna Haynes.
Yes, I guess going back several generations, my great-grandfather, Reuben Kester, and his wife, Myrtle Kester, moved to Newtown to bring their kids to George School. He was also a farmer. His wife, Myrtle, I knew. She lived until I was about three years old. One memory was given to me, because it's not something I'd really noticed at that age. But apparently, she would greet and shake hands with everyone as they came into meeting. I guess I was imitating her or I was doing the same thing when I was, like, really little. And George Walton came up to me and says, you remind me of your great-grandmother. And so he sort of gave me a memory, because I didn't, never observed her doing that, that I remember.
I'm trying to think which funeral it was Heather spoke. Must have been Grandma, my mother. Yes. And we sat here on the bench with our whole family. She kept pushing him that she wanted to speak. And I thought, oh, dear Lord. I can't imagine what will come of it. Finally, I just looked at him and just nodded my head. I thought, we've lived through Heather all these years. We can live through this. And when she got up, she said the most appropriate things. She had gone to a queen of the universe, and it's Catholic. She stood up and said something about her grandmother and so forth. And then she said, and Jesus Christ. Almost fell off. I'm grabbing Dick's leg like this, because that's how he would have yelled, Jesus Christ. Is with her today, and we are blessed or something. And we all went, oh.
Well, I do remember one little, just a little anecdote. When Tim Mammel was little, he was always saying smart things and reading stuff. And he knew a lot of stuff. He was a very bright boy. He just was. Well, at one point, I guess it was around Christmas season or something, Friendly Persuasion was on TV, and we were watching that. So a little while after Friendly Persuasion was on, one day in meeting, Tim was sitting in the corner back there. In the middle of dead silent Quaker meeting, he jumps up and says, God is love. That's his sound. And I'm like, he got that from the movies.
Hmm, I don't remember that at all. Well, it's definitely more diverse in thinking and in viewpoints and people coming from different walks of life. Those were the two wedge issues. It's like, you know, can you approve gay marriage? And do you have to be a Christian to be Quaker? I think difficult for a lot of Quakers to deal with it in the spirit rather than emotionally. I witnessed a lot of ugly moments. It was very challenging. And the way we embrace, you know, kids with learning issues. And I think that's really ramped up too. And so that kids with all kinds of challenges can come to first day school and join the other kids. Just to be very aware of how to embrace people that we may not completely understand right away or that we have to learn a lot of things about. Or, you know, we had a discussion group on being transgender and non-binary not too long ago, that the meeting came together and we talked about it and to learn more about it.
And I've learned that there are different pronouns now that we use. I don't quite know when I should use them, however, but the girls will help me.
I remember going upstairs and putting together personal care kits or first aid kits. Put them in the little box, and it said, American Friend Service Committee. And you put them in the big box, and they went off to Philadelphia. We used to have a clothing, recycle, bring in clothing, put it in the shed. It goes off to American Friend Service. So there were service projects like that. So I've been really glad to see Grace bringing back the service projects for the kids.
Mostly, the differences I see are the people. Over time, you get more and more new people. So of course, the whole character of the meeting changes. But honestly, I thought it was very healthy. Because I've, over time, heard about other meetings that have what they call the dying meetings. The membership's falling off and there's nobody left. But look at this. This is wonderful.
I guess as society itself has kind of become less formal, much more informal. It's still kind of, I notice dress, for example.
The speaking is different. It was a little more formal. And we honored our elders. We approached them differently. Very respectful. And there was more of a separation of generations. I think our young people are more comfortable to being themselves around the older folks.
Well, of course, it's, we had no addition when we were little. And then in the 50s, they put on the old addition. And then eventually, what we have today. This is the third kitchen iteration in our lifetime. The driveway has changed over the years. It used to wrap around, and there used to be parking out here. And now that's gone. Of course, the addition of all the electronics in here now, which I find jarring when I come in.
Our son Dan said something that I think works for us as well. And that is, he says, here, I can be my authentic self. I think that it fits the way I feel. Here, I can be my authentic self. I can be, I can say stupid stuff. I can do stupid stuff, and I'm still going to be loved. You know, as I've gone through my life, this has been an anchor, a touchstone during difficult and uncertain times.
I like to think that this is who I am. I can't differentiate that kind of thing. I would hope that my behavior, wherever I am, would reflect that.
I identify as Quaker. The basic beliefs that I was taught in the beginning, the inner light and that of God inside, that basic little core idea, that concept, has always stuck with me. Well, you know, everybody comes in here and settles down, and it's all quiet. And before you know it, you can feel something going on. You can feel just this togetherness type energy. That's why I like meeting.
But I always felt safe. I felt I could be who I really was here. And we would all be accepted. Then you come into the meeting house, and it just takes the weight of the world off your shoulders. You also think there's something bigger than myself. When it's filled with people, it's even better. Which sounds kind of strange. But because it's quiet and because we're all experiencing the quietness together, that, to me, is the power of spirituality.
You have these ideals. And I've really learned that you can have very high ideals and actually put them into practice. I think most importantly, I learned, growing up in this meeting, that you do what you can and you really do what you know is right, but don't try to do it perfectly. That you do the best you can. And that, and every little bit you do can be really helpful.
I think it has helped me know how to... I think it has helped me know how to deal with people in trying to find the good in each person and being accepting and reaching out to people.
This is who I am. I can't imagine being anything else but a member of Newtown Meeting, Quaker, of course, but this is my home.
This structure and everything about it particularly is my lifetime home essentially because we've lived at various places at George School. We lived in Yardley, now we're at Penswood, but this has been a constant.
Yeah, growing up in this meeting has an immeasurable impact on me, of course. But I think, I definitely feel that this is a place where I can just be myself and not have to be different. A big part of my life is activism of, you know, sharing message of like, you know, sharing a vision, try to affect change and to have the perspective that, okay, this is where we are now and I just do my best to affect change and not get frustrated or angry. Keeping balanced, not, you know, not burning out, not feeling self-righteous, not feeling, you know, just having a good perspective.
I suppose the big difference came to me was after I got married and left the meeting. And I had a whole different new view of the world. I realized after looking back on that, how rich my childhood was. But it's a blessing that I had what I had because it taught me a lot about equal rights and treating people right. And what does that little light inside really mean?
I was just reflecting also as other people spoke about how the adjustment for me was in leaving the meeting, the Quaker circles and dealing with the rest of the world and realizing it didn't all operate on the same assumptions like unity and decision-making. And I also wanted to give a nod to Pam and Dick because you brought us really important lessons with Heather.
Oh, yeah.
You taught this meeting to open our hearts to a child who was different. Heather was such a joy as she came in and gave everybody big hugs and, at a time when children like that were not welcomed into our communities. So, thank you.
You embrace each other and I think that's a wonderful thing. And I'm so grateful to my family and my meeting family. They helped raise me.